We have two attorneys with us, we have the planner with us, many members of the public, the planning board, the engineers, and the town board. What we have some, we want to make sure that we're doing the park correctly. So what we're getting together is to make sure we're following the process, get advice as we need it, and there's a public hearing tomorrow night, and we want to just make sure we've got all our i's dotted and t's crossed. We are putting this, here's Tom, we're putting this on pandas so that the people at home can see what's going on, so that it's not a covert meeting in any sense. So I guess our welcome.
Hey, carry on.
So one of the things we're looking at is whether we should reaffirm or rescind the negative declaration on the park plan, and based on, and also we want to find out whether we've, we're taking a hard look or not, make sure that we're taking an adequate hard look at this. And that's why all the experts are here, because they're the ones that have been taking the hard look. So I guess I'll, Warren has some questions, I'll ask Warren.
Bruce, let me just make this statement, that I think a number of the things we're going to be discussing require legal advice from our attorneys. And to the extent that what you say constitutes legal advice, I think we should adjourn and go into a session where we can get legal advice. At least, I thought that's primarily the purpose of this meeting.
Well, what, what I'd look, I understand what you're saying, Joe, what I'd like to do is to keep as much of it in the public eye as possible, and then the attorneys can tell us when we should go into that session. And I apologize to people for that, but I think, I think that's what we need to do with this.
Mm-hmm.
You okay with that?
Yes, I'm okay with that.
You okay with that?
Good enough.
Okay.
You know, maybe.
Warren, do you have questions?
Yeah, I mean, this, this came to me a short while ago, and the matter's also been referred to John Lyons, who is the planning board attorney, and John wrote a very good memo, which I, which I got a couple of days ago, outlining what he thinks needs to be done to consider this issue of whether you need to amend your negative declaration that was issued in conjunction with the, with the review of the master plan 2009, as a result of certain changes that have occurred with regard to the project since the development of the master plan. The, in order to guide you on this, and I think John had the same questions in his memo, we needed some information, and specifically, we really need to know what changes, substantive changes there have been to the, to the project since the master plan was created in 2009 and the environmental review occurred at that time, what those changes are, whether those changes would have been encompassed by the original SEQA review of the project, and whether those changes, if not, whether those changes are substantive enough and have the potential for significant environmental impacts, where you need to study them before issuing a, an amended, amended negative declaration, or rescind the negative declaration. In my opinion, I'm not sure that you even have to go to an amended negative declaration if you don't feel that the changes are of a nature which give rise to an amended negative declaration. I don't know how John feels about that, but it's hard for me to advise until I know, and that was the purpose of having everybody here, so we can discuss that. So I know that there was an issue with regard to the sewage disposal system, which was supposed to be tied into the municipal system, and there was supposed to be a tie into the water system. An initial question, is that the construction of that part of phase one or phase two of the, of the master plan?
Okay.
It's a little, I'm a little confused in going over the documents that I have, as to what, what actions are going to be part of phase one and what actions are part of phase two, because there's some inconsistency in some of the documents, so.
You can help us.
Yeah.
I'm sure you can. Well, also, just as a point of clarification, phase one is infrastructure, so it's, and phase two are the amenities, primarily. And, you know, there's a little bit of hybrid, but that's what we're doing. So the big construction stuff, the water sewer, electricity, those kinds of things, that's being done in phase one, excavation for roads, water, stormwater and things like that. Phase two are different things to use for, by, and, yeah, there's lists of these that people have.
And then all of the, both things were included in environmental review that could place back in 2009.
Why don't we let Art address it?
Art, I'm sorry, you're going to have to come to the microphone, I think, isn't he?
Oh, okay, fine. I can, I can speak up, I believe.
For the public, sorry, Art.
You can carry that over there.
No, no issue.
I think the, the key point here is that the EAF that was prepared, I believe, by the LA Partnership back in 2008, maybe, may have been revised by the LA Partnership and the town board in early 2009, and was ultimately the subject of the negative declaration that was issued by the town board in June of 2009. That particular neg deck did not focus on what constituted phase one, phase two, phase three, or whatever phase of the project. It dealt with the overall development of the master plan for the TTSM park. What has occurred in the, in recent time is as the park committee and its project engineer have worked on the plan, refining the master plan, and coming up with the proposed, what are now the phase, is the phase one implementation program for the park, that phase one program has been tailored down from that which was identified in, as phase one in the master plan report, the contemplated phase one. The reason being, a matter of limited resources. The phase one implementation plan, as I understand it, I think as the park committee will confirm and the engineers will confirm, has now been stated, the list that Bruce referred to, has now been stated as a list of essentially infrastructure projects that are projected to be within the range of the resources that are available to carry out the work at this point in time, the financial resources. The second aspect, so that's one difference, and I'm, a difference that's been observed. I don't think it's a difference in terms of the environmental review, in that the environmental review dealt with the totality of the project, it did not break it into phase one, phase two, et cetera. What has changed, however, is that the method for treating sanitary sewage that would be generated within the park has been changed. The initial master plan, as considered in the initial environmental assessment, was for the park to connect to the municipal sewage facilities, essentially the Village of Rhinebeck facilities. While the park will continue to link with the village for provision of municipal water service, the proposal with respect to sanitary sewage at this time is to construct or install an onsite sanitary sewage disposal system, essentially a septic field. I've confirmed in discussion with the project engineer that that particular, the particular location that is shown now on the phase one implementation plan for the sanitary sewage disposal system is importantly, one, outside any area of environmental sensitivity on the project. In other words, it's away from the wetlands, it's away from any stream corridors, and most importantly, probably in this case, it's away from the archaeologically sensitive site. Secondly, the project engineer has confirmed that in its opinion, in the engineer's opinion, the project at the, the septic disposal system or the sewage disposal system at the location proposed is suitable for approval, design approval, by the Dutchess County Health Department. That has not been a knee-jerk determination that's been made, it's not been made on the basis of simple observation, it's been made on the basis of the conduct of deep test and percolation test in the field supervised, I understand, or observed by the county health department. I'm asking, Aaron, is that correct?
That is correct.
So essentially, what I'm saying is the, the change that has occurred is this matter of how municipal sewage will be handled, and because there is that change, I think, Warren, I concur now with John, that there is a need here for amendment of the negative declaration. And I provided last Tuesday, and I'm not sure if how it's circulated, I provided upon hearing this issue raised last Tuesday to Bruce, and I'm not sure if it's gotten to the other town board members, I know John has considered it, some amendatory language for the neg deck. And that amendatory language did not include what I said about the confirmation by the project engineer of the conduct of deeps and tests, and I would think that would be added, that line would be added to the amendatory neg deck. So that's the, that's the, that's the background situation. The rest is for the legal beagles. Or, or the park committee, I mean.
Let me ask you a question, two, two things, Aaron. On the soil for the septic system, has the Department of Health signed off on that? Do we have that all wrapped up, or is that still open?
Project testing.
It's currently under their review.
Oh, okay, so that hasn't been signed off completely.
And, you know, technically, the Department of Health is not in a position to even, they're not in a position to issue a permit at this point in time, until the secret determination is made here, because this project was a, was a type one action subject to a coordinated review.
Okay.
So they would have to still be in, they would be in the quote "review" phase.
So they're waiting for us? Is that my understanding?
Their review is, is still underway.
And they won't complete that unless we finish the SEQA? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
They can't issue a permit until, until the secret determination is made. I think it would be helpful, the thing that I was concerned about is, I wanted to make sure that before the board did, made a decision on this, that it had all the background information that it needed to make an intelligent decision. Can we finish? So I think it might be helpful, just for the engineer, to describe for the board and the public, what type of system we're putting in, what design, what the design is for this system, whether it needs any speedies permit or anything like, whether it's conventional system or an unconventional system, what the potential is for contamination of the groundwater, or if there is any. Just so we understand what, what we're talking about, and maybe we could just show on a map, if we have it, where the location of the system is. And I'd be happy if we could get that.
And why the change?
May I talk about the change and what the engineers and the sites is trying?
Cost.
I think it was very helpful for Art to give you some background, but there are two reasons that had us moving the path that we moved in terms of making the modification. One, initially, if you all go back and you all remember, that there were two sites identified for the community center. One was where the pavilion is being proposed now, and the other is on Route 308. With the potential for the pavilion to the rear of the property, it made a lot of sense to hook up to the municipal system because of the volume and the need that would be generated with the community center to the rear of the property. When the community made the decision and the town board supported it, that we would no longer consider the community center to the rear, and the site would be directly opposite the library, understanding the fiscal impact, financial impact, which came to a couple of hundred thousand dollars to put the municipal system to the rear of the property, it just made sense to look at alternatives. And then we turned to the engineers and asked them to do the important engineering studies that would create another viable solution to, you know, the need for a septic system for the restrooms that would be installed in the pavilion. So that's more background to fill in what Art has presented, and the engineers can now deal with the detail of what is being proposed.
Rich Messer with Weston and Sampson. Yeah, Sally did a nice summary of the changes, and originally, there was going to be a sewer pump station proposed, and it was going to have a force main leading up to the entrance, and then it had to go additional about 800 feet down to the lowest, the closest manhole, sewer manhole. So it was quite an expense relative to now, the change to a pavilion being constructed. So part of that discussion, again, talked about cost of an alternative, and so we proceeded to do some deep test and some perp test in the area that, we knew where the pavilion was going to go, so we did a conservative estimate about where the septic tank and septic system would have to be, and it would have been, it would be a conventional system, based on the soil types that were found. So we did the testing, as mentioned, the Department of Health was there during the testing, and we submitted our plans accordingly to them. And since it's a conventional system, and we have 100% replacement area, if there was ever any problems, we also conservatively estimated the visits, because we took the worst-case scenario, so that it's, it's basically designed for a big event, where you'd have multiple fields being used at the same time, and a lot of activity at the same time. Probably not a standard, but it could happen, so we addressed that in the design. So we feel comfortable, it's conservative, and we'll get DOH approvals based upon final determination on the SEQA process.
I'm fine with that. What about, I don't know if you have any questions, but the, the water system, what does the change in the water system?
The water system hasn't changed, it's, it's going to be hooked up to the water main, the 14-inch.
Oh, okay. So there's no change in that?
No. There, there is a, maybe somebody mentioned, part of the process for this phasing, there is going to be a temporary line, two-inch line brought in to the back part of the property to facilitate getting the bathrooms approved, so that they can get the, the funding, the grant funding for that. And then the next phase immediately after that would be to finish putting in the larger diameter pipe, all the way to the back to the pavilion. But that's the only, it's a temporary measure that's being also provided to the Department of Health, so they can comment on it.
So in consideration of what you've just said, and what Art had said, in that the, the system is going to be totally outside of any environmental, environmentally sensitive areas, I assume that this does not have the potential to impact any environmentally sensitive areas, the groundwater, or cause any significant impacts on the environment? Would that be fair to say?
It would be fair to say, considering it's a conventional system and it's servicing public restrooms, so.
Now, other, other than this system, and I didn't, I, I did read a, a letter that was sent complaining to the board that there was a need for rescission of the negative declaration, are there any other significant or substantive changes to the, to the project that we should be aware of?
Well, we've, there's a few things, we've added a.
All right, Bruce, before we go on, let me just ask you one question. So from what you said, your conclusion is that this change in the waste disposal will have no adverse effect on the environment?
Correct.
That's what you're saying?
It's going to be, it's going to be a conventional system that many, many residences have throughout the village-town areas, depending on where, if there's a municipal wastewater available or not, but it's, it's a standard system, conventional system.
I'm sorry, Bruce.
It's okay, Joe. We, we added a composting toilet, right, Clivus, is that?
Correct.
And that's so that the restroom could be used in the wintertime when the water shut off in the, in the other bathrooms. We've, we're not moving the basketball court anymore. Originally, we were going to move the basketball court to a different field, different location, and that's been checked with, the engineers have checked with the shippo, and that's fine, so we're leaving that where it is. What else? The, the mul, the, the big shelter that was supposed to have been added down by the pool was built in 2009. The dog park that's on the plan is at Stone Church.
Skateboard park.
Skateboard park was, was in the plan when we adopted it, but it wasn't in the build-out out of the estimates. So, so that was done as we were accepting the plan. And that goes behind the Little League field that's there. And there, Weston and Sampson have been doing the stormwater for that. We've had a lot of problems with different people involved in it, some of the development of it, but they've been doing their part. So those, those are the major things. You know, it's, that, that's about it.
You don't see any potential for significant environmental impacts with regard to those changes, do you?
No, the, any changes, as, as Bruce was talking about, are consistent with the overall plan, they're just moving things around and slight additions.
So same question to Art.
For the record, I'm asking the same questions of Art.
I believe there are no adverse effects associated with the modification.
Right, and I seen that where you got the language for the consistency language, it's in the negative declaration.
Yeah, it follows along with the negative.
Right, because you do, there's a provision in here, which, and I'll just read it, as each, this is part of the SEQA negative declaration, as each, well, I'll read the whole thing. "The TTSM Park Master Plan is set forth by the Town Park Committee as modified above by the Town Board is intended as a framework within both park-wide infrastructure elements such as stormwater management, access and parking, and utility arrangements, and individual projects will be advanced into engineering and through construction as priorities and finances permit over the next several years. As each occurs, the park-wide element or individual project will be evaluated for consistency with the park master plan, and additional environmental review may be conducted due to changed circumstances involving either refinement of the location, an extent of the improvement, or new or modified regulations that may be applicable to the undertaking." So now I understand the consistency language, and I'm not unhappy, if you want to reinsert that, that it is in fact consistent with the master plan, separate and apart from being a reaffirmation of your negative declaration, so. Does anybody understand that?
I understand that. I was wondering, Warren and John and Art, do you feel that a hard enough look was undertaken for the SEQA? Do you have enough information to, to give your opinion on that?
For the underlying SEQA?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it appeared to me, I, I wasn't intimately involved, and I'm just basing it upon my review of the, of the long-form EAF, and I just took a look at the expanded EAF, and it certainly looks like a hard look was taken at the environmental impacts. But that issue is passed, I mean, the secret determination has been made, we're not revisiting the original secret determination. The only thing that's before you now is the limited issue as to these changes that have been made in the plan, which is consistent with the protocol established in your negative declaration, as to whether those changes trigger the need for further environmental review, and whether they're consistent with the master plan, which I think we've kind of determined they are.
I don't know if finances come into what we're supposed to be doing in this review, but it sounds like that this leach field and septic system will be less expensive than the original plan.
That's what they said.
Substantially less, yes.
Oh, really?
Hundreds of thousands.
Are we, are we asking for a motion to, to consider?
I, I don't know whether you're still, I mean, John may have some things to say, but he prepared a, with Art's assistance, a, an amended SEQA negative declaration, which I'm.
Well, I do want to go into an attorney-client session to get some legal advice. I don't know if you want to do this before we go into an attorney-client.
Probably agree to meet prior to me talking to you.
Okay.
Just remember, an attorney-client session is just for legal advice, we're not making any decisions in, in, in that meeting, it's not like an executive session, it's just to, to obtain legal advice from your legal counsel.
Right, and our discussion has to be restricted to obtaining legal advice.
Right.
Great, so we'll be back shortly. Get a motion?
Yeah, let's make a motion.
What we have to do is adjourn the meeting.
Yes.
And then go into attorney-client session.
And then we resume when we come out?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're all set. Could somebody?
Should it continue, right?
Yeah.
So, so we need a motion and a second to continue, no? The corrector, no?
Motion for second?
Ballot favor, aye.
Aye.
So we adjourned at 3:31, it's now 4:17, from attorney-client session, and, Bruce, continue.
Oh, Warren?
Okay, let me lead you through this.
Yeah, please.
We have what we were discussing before we went into attorney-client session, a document that's entitled "Amended SEQA Negative Declaration: Notice of Determination of Nonsignificance." I am not going to read the entire document, it's identical to the original of notice of, notice of determination of non-significance. I'm only going to read the changes that we've made, made to this document. So on page one, just cites the fact that the original negative declaration was issued on June 8th, 2009, and is amended as of October 21st, 2013, with the modifications as underlined. And on the first page, there is the following amendment. "This amendment, amended SEQA negative declaration addresses certain changes and modifications which have been made to the proposed action, the Thompson, Thomas-Thompson-Sally-Mazarello Park Master Plan, subsequent to the lead agency's issuance of a negative declaration for the proposed action dated June 8th, 2009. In issuing this amended negative declaration, the lead agency complies with the statement in the original negative declaration that, in the event of changed circumstances involving other refinement of the location, an extent of the improvements, or new or modified regulations that may be applicable to the project, the project will be evaluated for consistency with the original SEQA determination of significance. On September 17th, 2013, the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board and the Village of Rhinebeck Planning Board collectively, the boards, each determined by resolution that the implementation of phase one of the project as currently proposed will not cause any potential adverse environmental impacts, which were not addressed in the course of the previous environmental review, which culminated in the issuance of the SEQA negative declaration dated June 8th, 2009. The lead agency has considered the recommendation of the Town and Village Planning Boards, and has conducted its own review, and issues this amended declaration." And states lead agency, the Town Board of Rhinebeck. Now, from there, everything else is identical to the original neg deck. Now, from there, everything else is identical to the original negde. So I'm going to page three, and I refer you to the last full paragraph on page three. And in that paragraph, it states, "In the matter of groundwater quality or quantity, there shall be neither surface nor subsurface discharge of domestic sanitary sewage at the TTSM Park. As set forth in the EAF, it is the intent to serve the TTSM Park by connecting to municipal sewage, sanitary sewage facilities. Water supply demand will also be met by connection to municipal facilities. Thus, the TTSM Park will cause no impact on the groundwater resources of the project site." Now, that language is deleted. So it's noted in this resolution that that language is now deleted. And this language from the original June 8, 2009 negative declaration shall be deleted from the amended negative declaration dated October 21, 2013. We're leaving it in the negative deck for clarity purposes so people understand what we're deleting. Now, the next paragraph, and I'll read it in its entirety. "As set forth in the EAF, water supply demand will be met by connection to the municipal facilities." I'm sorry, wait a second. That's, I'm repeating the deleted language. Is this identical to the other? No. "And will thus cause no impact on the groundwater resources of the project site. As planning for Phase One improvements has progressed in the four years since the SEACR negative declaration, the now proposed installation of an onsite subsurface sanitary sewage facilities have been substituted for the previously proposed connection to municipal sewage facilities. In that, the now proposed onsite facilities will be located outside any environmentally sensitive areas of the park, including substantially distanced from the surface water resources. The sanitary sewage facilities will cause no impact on the, either the groundwater or the surface water resources of the project site." I think there's a typo there. I'm sorry, moreover, that's, okay, moreover. Shouldn't it be additional safeguarding?
In addition.
In addition. So we're adding.
Additional, additional.
Additional. Moreover, so make that change to your copy. Additional safeguarding will be provided by the requirement that the design and installation of the onsite sanitary sewage facilities shall be in accordance with the standards promulgated by the Dutchess County Department of Health, including their location within the park. And in parentheses, we note, I'm sorry, and then add to that, "as determined suitable by the project engineer upon conduct of deep test and percolation test." So we've added that language in, to what you have. And then in parentheses, it says, "This new language is added to the amended, amended negative declaration dated October 21, 2013." Everything else is identical. So this would constitute the amended negative declaration. And then I have a resolution. So listen to this carefully in case we have to make changes. And this is a revised draft of the resolution. And this is the SEACR determination proposed Phase One improvements Thompson/Sally Mazzarella Park. Whereas the Town Board of the Town of Rhinebeck is the SEACR lead agency for the Thompson/Mazzarella Park, and whereas on September 17, 2013, the Town Planning Board and the Village of Rhinebeck Planning Board, referred to collectively as the boards, each determined by resolution that the improvements now proposed as Phase One in the development of the park, as set forth within the limits of financial resources presently available, are in scale and location among the elements of the overall master plan adopted by the Town Board in June 2009 for the park. The boards also found that the implementation of the now proposed Phase One improvements will cause no potential significant environmental effects heretofore unaddressed in the environmental analysis of the park, as culminated in the issuance of a SEACR negative declaration by the Town Board in its role as SEACR lead agency prior to its adoption of the Park Master Plan. And whereas the Town Board now acts in consideration of the environmental effects of the components of the new proposed Phase One development, as set forth on a list dated June 4, 2013, as then presented to the Village Planning Board and depicted within pertinent portions of a 33-sheet set of engineering drawings dated May 13, each is prepared by Weston and Sampson in its work with the TTSM Park Committee. Be it resolved that the Town Board concurs in the above stated findings as set forth by the Town and Village Planning Boards, except in noting that the installation of onsite sanitary sewage facilities, subject to design approval by the Dutchess County Department, Health Department, are now intended, instead of the previous proposed connection to municipal sanitary sewage facilities, and after consideration thereof, finds that those steps now take, taken in, in now proposed Phase One development, a, are otherwise consistent with the Park Master Plan as adopted by the Town Board on June 8, 2009, comma, b, do not otherwise require modification in the location and extent of the other proposed improvements, and c, do not otherwise require those proposed improvements to be subject to either new or modified regulations. And be it further resolved that the Town Board finds the proposed installation of onsite sewage facilities, sanitary sewage facilities, designed in accordance with standards promulgated by the Dutchess County Health Department, are subject to design approval by the department, including consideration of the proposed location within the park, will not cause any significant adverse effects on the environment. And be it further resolved in consideration of the above stated concurrence and except in the matter of the further finding above, that the Town Board determines that the environmental effects of the now proposed Phase One improvements as set forth within the limits of financial resources presently available and being essential infrastructure elements in support of both the present facilities within the park and future development as envisioned by the master plan for the park, to be among the TTSM Park components examined within the expanded environmental assessment prepared by the LA Group and evaluated by the Town Board with input from the Town Planning Board, Town Conservation Advisory Council, now Conservation Advisory Board, the Town Waterfront Advisory Committee, and the public prior to the town's issuance of the aforementioned SEACR negative declaration on June 8, 2009. And be it further resolved based upon the further finding above, the Town Board determines that no additional environmental review is required in the matter of the now proposed Phase One improvements within the park, and in so doing, issues the next amended negative SEACR, next amended SEACR negative declaration, which modifies the below-exercited paragraph set forth at page three of the aforementioned SEACR negative declaration, to read as further set forth below, and otherwise reaffirms the aforementioned SEACR negative declaration. And then we, in the resolution, we restated the language that is to be deleted. "In the matter of the groundwater quality or quantity, there's, will be neither surface nor subsurface discharge of domestic sanitary sewage, et cetera." It's the same language we deleted. And we're noting in the resolution that that language is deleted from the amended negative declaration. "As set forth in the EAF, water supply demand will be met by connection to municipal facilities and will cause, thus cause no impact on the groundwater resources of the project site. As planning for Phase One development, Phase One improvements has progressed in the four years since the issuance of the SEACR negative declaration, the now proposed installation of an onsite subsurface sanitary sewage facilities have been substituted for the previously proposed connection to municipal sewage facilities. In that, the now proposed onsite facilities will be located outside any environmentally sensitive areas of the park, including substantially distant from surface water resources. Sanitary sewage facilities will cause no impact on either the groundwater or surface water resources of the project site." That's the 2013 amended negative declaration. So I would need a, someone to make a motion? Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Some discussions. I don't know who I, I guess I direct this to you and John, maybe the committee. There's been a lot of concern within the community about, what we're doing tonight, I guess it's a two-part question. I just want to be clear that it's my understanding, what we're doing tonight is amending the negative declaration to approve Phase One, which is an infrastructure, infrastructure project for the park only. Is that true?
That's correct. You're just finding that those, that Phase One does not have an adverse impact.
Okay, so that's what we're doing here tonight. There's been a lot of concern within the community about what fields we are or aren't delivering. I have done some diligence, but I want you to answer this for me publicly. Does this in any way restrict in the future what we could offer the community in terms of fields?
No.
Either changing or adding? We could add field. If, if another board or a board wanted to amend this and put in more fields, we could do that at a later date in the future.
Yes, you could. You might have to look at, look again at the environmental impact of that change.
Okay, so that's not a.
But you're not going to be restricted from making changes.
And is looking at the environmental impact a very involved process?
Depends on what's changed.
Okay, if we wanted to add another field or something, we would go through a, a process like this to look at it.
That's right.
So we could do it easily in the future.
Yes. As a matter of fact, I think, yeah, I concur in that. I, I see this as an evolving plan that's going to evolve over.
Over the years.
A period of years and will respond to the community needs as those needs.
Sure.
Change and develop.
Sure.
And you always have the ability to make changes to the project and to the park to accommodate those needs. Nothing you're doing tonight is going to engraft anything in stone that can't be amended or changed or modified later on. With regard to the soccer fields, I, if I recall, the original master plan talked in terms of, of, you know, not one, perhaps two, depending on, on the ball fields, and there might be changes. So all of that is.
We could switch it around.
Yeah, all of that is contemplated. So nothing you're doing tonight creates a chorus in the future as to the recreation fields that, that, that can't be modified.
According to the community's desire.
In accordance with needs. Exactly. Well, it's the needs of the community.
Now, and one other question, and I guess, and there's nothing in the Winnicke easement. I've spoken to the director of Winnicke that would prevent us from adding more fields. It's only to protect us from residential development this easement. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. I think as long as it's not going to have an impact on any of the environmental concerns that we would have.
That we could add fields.
That there's the potential for that.
Yeah, I mean, you couldn't, obviously, fields in environmentally protected areas or areas.
We wouldn't.
That are conserved by the conservation easement is not what we're talking about. We're talking about a reconfiguration of the developable, area of the, of the site in, in accordance with the needs of the community.
And just like we've made modifications based on some environmental issues, you know, it's just a thing that may happen in the future. What you said, something about the Google is really observing all of the infrastructure of the site. There is the pavilion that's also part of Phase One.
Yes, of course.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Excuse me, can I just add something very related to this last stage? I think it's important for the board members.
Could you approach the, introduce yourself? Sorry.
Richard Murray, resident Rhinebeck. I think it's important for the town to know that, yes, this is possible, and that's wonderful, provided we all work together. But you do need permission from Winnicke when they take control. What we stamp and what we approve is the final plan. Should they decide that they don't want fields, it is within their authority to prevent anything else from happening. I'm sure that would never happen. But regardless, no, you cannot just put fields because the community needs more fields down the road. We either put them on the site plan now as future development, or down the road, we would have to go to Winnicke and we say, we know your mission is to preserve open space, but we would like a couple more acres. We're subject to that. The town is at their mercy. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Look, the easement speaks for itself. I don't think we have to interpret the easement. Our lawyers will interpret the easement. We're not going to start interpreting the easement here.
So let us vote on the motion at hand.
Don't ask me to repeat it.
Good reading.
So by roll call. Who do you have first, me?
Do a roll call.
Supervisor votes aye. Deputy Supervisor Washburn.
Aye.
Counselperson Pox.
Aye.
Counselperson Gell.
Aye.
And Counselperson Svenzia.
Aye.
And that is so moved. And that is all at this point. So the next, so Tuesday, Wednesday night is the joint planning.
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
Where are we today?
Today's Monday, yeah.
Tomorrow night at the Village Hall will be the.
It's still Monday.
Joint Planning Boards meeting to continue, so. Any further?
Thank you, everyone.
Motion and second.
Thank you all.
Motion and second to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.